Good afternoon, everybody. If you would, I'll welcome you to this session of the Paulding County Planning Commission. At this time, if you have any mobile devices, any noise makers whatsoever, please turn them off or silence so that don't interrupt the proceedings of this meeting. We're going to dispense with the reading of the minutes from the previous session of this body, but I'll ask now if the Planning Commission has -- everybody had a chance to review those minutes? Are there any comments, edits, concerns? Hearing none, at this time, I will entertain a motion with -- let me, before I do that, I also want to welcome as our new member Deb Reesver to the Planning Commission, and she serves as the chairman's appointee to the Planning Commission. So, welcome aboard and look forward to your service. At this time, I will entertain a motion with regard to approval of the minutes from the previous session of this body. I have a motion to approve by Mr. Aston, a second by Mr. Henson, all in favor. Motion passes six, zero, and one. Bear with me just a second. I will go through this probably several times during the course of the meeting, as I typically do, but just to let everybody know, this is a recommending body. We will hear each application as presented to the Planning Commission. Fifteen minutes will be allotted to the applicant for the presentation of that application. They may reserve -- may use all of that time or reserve some for rebuttal after opposition or interrogatories may occur. Any time from questioning that takes place from the Planning Commission or the Board of Commissioners to the applicant or anybody who comes up to the podium does not count against their time, but it's fifteen minutes allowed for that. On the other side, if there's any questions, comments, or concerns or noted opposition that wishes to speak on part of the application, they're allotted fifteen minutes as well. That is cumulative time, so if you've got more than one person for any particular application, I would suggest that you either find somebody to speak for you or everybody needs to be mindful of the people behind them waiting to speak. It's fifteen minutes total time. And again, this is a recommending body, meaning that whatever decision is rendered with regard to an application that the Planning Commission makes, it will be forwarded to the governing authority, which in this case, I believe, in all instances is going to the Board of Commissioners at tonight's meeting at seven o'clock. Applicants must be present for the application to be considered there, and anybody that may have an interest in the application for or against, it would be recommended that you attend that meeting as well. So, at this time, Ann, Ms. Lippman.
Thank you.
Would you like to introduce the first application?
I would love to. Our first application is old business, and it is a text amendment to zoning ordinance, 2003 version as amended. The amendment is in regards to Article 8, Section V, R-55 Active Adult Residential District, and this was tabled from the June 23, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Just want to give everybody a brief reminder about what the initial text amendment was and then provide you with a little updated information. The main part of this text amendment was to do changes to the single-family detached dwelling requirements in R-55, raising the minimum lot size from 4,800 square feet to 8,000 square foot -- feet and adjusting the setbacks accordingly. We also did some changes. As everyone knows, we're working on updating our zoning ordinance, development regulations, subdivision regulations, and so we included some initial thoughts from that process into this. We also increased the buffer requirements for R-55, and at the request of Paulding DOT required that all streets be designated to general layout requirements for local streets in the retirement community independent living district. And since we last met in June, I was asked by one of the Commissioners to provide some information about what some other jurisdictions in metro Atlanta have with their senior living districts. In metro Atlanta, there are only four counties that have a specified -- let's see if I can zoom in on this a little bit. Can zoom in and then, oops, wrong way. There are only four counties in metro Atlanta that have a dedicated senior living zoning district. It's Cobb County, Coweta County, Gwinnett County, and Spalding County. So, we did some research on each of those, looking specifically at the density, the single-family minimum lot size, and the single-family detached minimum lot size, and that's what you can see up on the screen. The density ranged from a low of 2.75 per net buildable acre in Spalding County up to five units in Cobb County. You can see that the minimum lot size ranged in all the counties, but the minimum house size was about the same. Another thing I looked at was the garage requirements in those four counties. Cobb County, all units must have an attached garage, which must be used for vehicle parking only. A minimum of two parking spaces per unit is required. The parking spaces must be in the driveway or garage. Coweta County requires single-family residences to have, either detached or attached, to have two spaces per dwelling unit. Gwinnett requires that all dwellings shall contain double-car garages. And as far as Spalding County, all residential units must have an attached garage. Conversion of the garage space to living space without providing the required garage parking space is not permitted. Driveways must provide for two cars to be parked without encroachment onto the sidewalk. So, if you have any questions, I've provided copies of all four jurisdictions zoning districts, which is why your packets are so big, but if there's anything you'd like to add or delete from our R-55, please let me know, and I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
At this time, we will open it to the Planning Commission for any questions to Ms. Lippman. I know that we've had much discussion over the past months with regard to these changes, and I do think that, you know, the long-lasting impact of those changes, this is, it's good that we've taken this length of time to deliberate over them. I've had some concerns brought to me with regard to the things that you've mentioned with going from a single-car garage to a double-car garage, also the setback requirements. I think we need to make sure that what we recommend moving forward will be able to contribute to the length of time, that these investments will remain on the ground and maintain their value. And a lot of that has to do with sizes, ability to get between houses in order to maintain them as necessary, and I know that each one of you have had input over this course of time, so if you have any questions, let's go ahead and begin that now. Floor is open.
And the updated regulations, revised regulations, I would say now that we're still not requiring two-car garages unless it's 1,400 square feet, is that correct?
That is correct. That was a change approved in January.
Okay, so we had to change that. In Cobb County, they do not require two-car garages as well?
Um, it's kind of, it's up here on the screen. All units must have an attached garage, which must be used for vehicle parking only, a minimum of two parking spaces. So, they may interpret that, and I think they do, that attached two-car garage is what's required in Cobb.
Can you have a two-parking space pad, two cars without having a two-car garage?
As you can see in some of these jurisdictions, they require a garage, but then they say you have to have space for two spaces to park in a parking lot. I think it's easier to just require a two-car garage.
Well, based on my experience as a real estate broker for 25 years and showing this type of property over and over, and I've been showing it in Cobb County, I've been showing it in Cherokee County, and all I'm seeing are two-car garages. And then, then of course, then I went to Sea Street City, and the majority of those homes are three-car garages, or two and a half because they have a little space for, you know, the car. And I then, after all of this going on, I went back to my office, got in front of my computer, and I pulled up all of metro Atlanta, and I looked to see where I could find an active adult community, an active adult home with a one-car garage. I found one. It was Higgins County. They were, it was in Jasper, and they were attached. Every place else was two-car garage. So, I...
So, so far, we're talking about a possible modification if a motion is made for approving the text amendment of adding a requirement across the board regardless of square foot size of the home to a two-car garage. That is a possible amendment. I'm not saying that's the direction we're going. That'll be left up to the person who makes the motion. There any other questions with regard to the changes proposed on this ordinance? You see that they've also addressed the lot size. As far as the lot size, is that going -- what is the limitation as far as number of units per acre?
Right now, the maximum density is still listed as five, but I will honestly say that if we increase the minimum lot size from 4,800 square feet to 8,000, I don't think there'd be any possible way to get five units per acre. So, you may want to consider lowering that density down. I don't think you could get more than four, maybe even more than three in some properties.
Is there any discussion on that item as far as thoughts, density level, requirements, minimums?
I like the fact of having larger lots sizes, and then with that being said, with you're putting a smaller home on a larger lot, I would say that you would also want to have that two-car garage. I think it would look kind of funny, a small house with a one-car garage on a larger lot.
Is there any other zoning category, and you may already know the answer to this, but that already allows for five units per acre outside of apartment complexes? So, this would be the highest density available?
It currently is the highest density.
Is there any other questions to Ms. Lippman regarding the text amendments as proposed? Any discussion on further changes that, or edits, or endorsements even?
Ann, now, thank you for all the work you've done here. It's obvious you've done quite a bit with all the paperwork we've received. So, actually, the only thing we would be changing text-wise now would be the garages. We would, if we stayed with what the proposal is now, that was the only thing we would actually be changing today. Is that correct?
I think you're voting on the changes we proposed last month, and it sounds like you might be entertaining a change to the garage.
Okay.
Unless you wanted to change the density. But that may take care of itself with bigger lots.
Any other comments from the Planning Commission? At this moment, before I go to the Board of Commissioners, I want to recognize Mr. Hofstadter from the Paulding County School Board. If you would like to make any comments addressing these changes, you're more than welcome to at this time. Okay. Board of Commissioners, any comments, any questions?
Okay, is this on?
Yes, sir. I can hear you.
I had a couple things, and I also like to thank Ann for all the work she has done, and we've had several multiple meetings. Just to clarify, under current text, it talks about the 1,400 square foot having the double-car, double-car garage, but then it also says no more than 30% of the dwellings in a subdivision may have a single car. And to link into that, it's my understanding from developers of R-55, not all, I haven't talked to all the developers, but that these homes are usually presold. So, how that ties into the 30%, you know, if there happens to be an elderly couple that just wants one-car garage and don't have that many things, you know, reason for storage or things, that they would be able to get that one-car garage. And then, before I pass it to Brian, mathematically, an acre equals 43,500 square feet. So, at the 8,000 square foot lot, if you had the full five on there, you still have a leftover 3,560 feet. So, and then, you know, if you go down to a smaller lot like it is now, like 4,800, you're going to have a lot of room left for amenities and trails and things like that. It's just up to the Planning Commission what their desires are.
And I'll just say, if anybody has a two-car garage, I can bring some stuff that they could store in there if they don't intend to be empty.
You know, I just ask for you all to think about some of the issues the county's been facing over the, I mean, we're having to go back and have correct issues from these PRDs that everybody was such against because the lots are so small. We had erosion problems. We have slope issues, drainage issues across the board, and that's 8,000 square foot lots in these PRDs. Now, PRD is, you can have three lots an acre, right? It's the density for a PRD. I think the average density on those is about a 2.3 yield somewhere round about because of a topo that we have in Paulding County, it's not exactly flat. So, which then, if you was to do the 8,000 square foot, times five, but then you've got to take into consideration with buffers and roads and utilities and right-of-way and stuff like that. So, that's why even a 8,000 square foot lot doesn't get the density of five. You know, there's no possible way. I mean, I guarantee you, some of the engineers sitting over there, anybody that does this for a living, they're probably on the average of three points something with that 4,800 square foot because of, you know, some of the challenges. I mean, you know, I went out to some of the products that's being built here in Paulding County with this R-55, and, you know, one of them didn't even have overhangs, you know, I mean, no ease or anything. I mean, you know, and you've got big, big old slopes. Somebody's going to have to take care of one of these days. I mean, you know, it should be like, you know, on the HOA and stuff like that, but what happens when the HOA's not there? I mean, we've had these issues in the past, and that's with the 8,000 square foot lot. So, that's where I'm going with that, and I think y'all need to consider looking at the density of about no more than three. I mean, right now, we have a big push of these zoning classifications, and the most we're allowing is two units an acre, and we expect them to put a good product on the ground. And the reason we're, when you limit that density, that makes that price of that lot go up, which then requires you to build a better product. So, you know, the higher the density, the less value, less lot cost is in there, which then I build and I develop myself. So, I ought to be on this other side of it. I should be wanting high density, but I realize the problems, and I want to live here in Paulding County the rest of my life. So, I don't want to just fill it up with just everything because we have a growth problem, and we had a growth problem 15, 20 years ago that I'd say was controlled but not to the best of the ability. So, we've had our issues in the past, so we don't need to go back there. So, I would just consider, you know, thinking about the density side of it, and that's why, you know, I've worked real hard with Ann and other people to figure out a square footage that might work in this. And, you know, there's, in PRDs on 8,000 square foot lots, there's good developments, there's bad developments. Like Bentwater and Seven Hills started out as, or I mean, is a good development. The Georgian is a good development, but I can take you to PRDs, that's not a good development. So, it really depends on who is building that, and like I said, I can take you to one of the products that I looked at Friday is a better product than the other one that I went and looked at. They have the same ability, but one didn't do what the other one did, you know, so, and that's because we allow it. So, we got to be careful. I mean, like I said, I mean, houses with no overhang and slopes right up to the back door, and then the houses are close. You can't even, you know, if there was a drainage issue, you can't really get in there to fix it one day. So, you know, anyway, I'll shut up.
So, what's your recommendation?
The 8,000 square foot lots.
Instead of the 4,800 square foot lots?
Is there any further comment or questions from the Board of Commissioners?
A couple things. So, this is not your ordinary residential area. It's not your ordinary subdivision. It is for 55-plus active adults. It's a community. People move there because they want to live in close, tight quarters in a community so that they can sit on their porch and wave to people as they walk by. I came from Tampa, Florida, and we have a lot of these communities, believe it or not, and they work very well, but it has to be done right. We just can't let people come in and take over with the R-55 communities because some people aren't doing them right, like Brian said. They have to be done right. They have to work good, and they have to work for R-55 and up active adults.
Anyone else, Board of Commissioners? Thank you very much.
Uh-oh, wait.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Hart?
No, I think that we've made, you know, I like to see that we've come in here and we've tried to create, you know, maybe a solution to this problem, and listening to you guys, I mean, I like to take it all in, but I'm thinking we may not be completely done with this yet, you know, as far as maybe some other things that we want to put in here. You know what I mean, going forward? So, anyway, I just, I see where somebody's tried to compromise a little bit in that other piece of paperwork that you gave us, and I think maybe there's still some work we need to do.
Anyone else, Board of Commissioners? I don't want to shortchange you.
In a surprising turn of events, I don't have any questions.
Planning Commission, after that comment, is there any further comment from you before I go to the floor?
Does Mr. Stover, Brian, do you wish to make the three per acre one of the stipulations from five?
Okay, yes, thank you. At this time, I will open it up to anyone that would wish to speak on this particular topic. If you have something that you would like to ask, comments you'd like to leave, please come forward, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair, with the chair being me.
I live at 5098 Riverview Road, Atlanta, Georgia. I own a company called Total Property Advisors. I've been in the real estate business for about 35 years, primarily functioning in the land development side, but I have been a home builder. I've probably built, over the years, 150 homes in Paulding County, and I've probably developed about 10,000 lots in my career in Florida, Georgia, North Carolina. And I'm here to say that, you know, lot size isn't everything, and I work for a company called Winsong, do a lot of work for them in their acquisition and development area. So, I'm very familiar with Eccles Farm, which is, I think it's about two and a half to three units per acre, but we go down to 4,800 square foot lots there. And I would invite all the board members to come out and see that project. Frankly, our buyer doesn't want a big yard. Our buyer doesn't have to maintain it. It's totally maintained by the HOA, front, sides, and rear. These homes start in the 380s, 390s, and I would also invite the board to go down and look at Bel Air, which is right over the Cobb County line, also on Macklin Road. It's probably 14 years old because I think there was a concern that, well, what happens? Will this turn into Section 8 housing or low-income housing? We're building probably a $3 million amenity package. The first phase is a clubhouse of $650,000. We've taken some of that open space that we want to put into lots, and we've made that open space hiking trails. Again, our buyer doesn't want an 8,000 square foot lot. I can take you to community after community where we don't offer 8,000 square foot lots. You know, some of these other changes, while they seem innocuous, are very difficult to enforce. You would take this three and a half unit per acre subdivision, and if we had to implement these design standards right now, we'd lose 25 to 30% of our homes. I don't have to tell you what land prices are doing, not only in Paulding County but throughout the metro Atlanta area. They're going through the roof. Development costs are not changing. They're actually going up. A lot that used to cost me 40,000 to develop is 60,000 to 70,000 today to develop. So, yes, we can give them 8,000 square foot, 8,000 square foot lots, but we'll end up giving them, instead of a 30-foot backyard, it'll be a 70-foot backyard. Our homeowners live kind of in their side yard, which is a big courtyard that faces actually into the other house, and they live on their front porch, which we pull as close to the street as we possibly can because we want to encourage waving at your neighbor and talking to your neighbor. So, the 8,000 square foot going to 4,800, and the fact of the matter is, I think this, Ann, correct me if I'm wrong, but our project is grandfathered in, so it actually helps us because nobody will be able to compete with us. But we don't want to be one and done in Paulding County. We want to build multiple projects in Paulding County with the flexibility to build great amenities, great walking trails, great public spaces, and, you know, on a smaller lot. I think our values will continue to hold up. Again, I would encourage you to go to Bel Air. It's 14, 15 years old. It looks fabulous today. It looks fabulous. So, again, some of these things are very restrictive, and they sound so innocuous. So, we're just going to take the side yard setback from five feet to eight feet. Again, we couldn't build these houses the way we're building them today, going to eight-foot side yards. So, again, I would just, you know, we want to do what's best for the county as well, but there are other ways to do that. Don't take density five to three. Take it down to four. You know, make R-55 developer build an amenity. You know, again, we're putting in a 650,000 square foot clubhouse, but that's one of free plan buildings for that area, you know, that surround a pond. So, anyway, I would just encourage you guys to think about what you're doing and how this is going to hamstring what I think is quality development. I would dare say Eccles Farm will be the nicest amenity package that's been built in this county since Seven Hills. You know, obviously, we can't compete with Seven Hills. We don't have thousands of homes, and we're not going to build a, you know, $2 million water park or whatever that was. But this amenity package is fabulous, and we can do that because we can convert some of this lot space into amenity. Thank you very much.
Mr. Randall, if you'd come back to the light.
Your lot size, what do you recommend with four units?
We go down to 4,800 square feet at this project. Some are 5,800, but again, you know, make it 5,000. Don't make it, please don't make it eight. You know, again, we put in special drainage. Somebody mentioned, well, drainage is a problem between, we put in $4,000, $5,000 worth of private, what we call private drainage. You know, you've got your public, street, storm drain, all that stuff. We put drains down the side yards and in the river so that, you know, our buyers don't worry about drainage. They don't want, they want that water gone 15 minutes after one inch rain. So, and that's what we're doing at Eccles right now, is putting in private drainage. So, we address some of those things that, you know, come with small lots. You know, we put the landscaping up slopes. Again, I would encourage everyone to drive out there. You know, we plant slopes before we ever build the houses. The other thing that's very tough that I forgot to mention is this whole 50-foot undisturbed buffer. You don't even require that up against commercial. You know, I don't think there's a residential zoning category in the county that's required to do a 50-foot buffer. Let us put that space into amenity. So, again, I would just encourage you to talk about it, look at it a little bit more, maybe have some more work sessions around that because, again, this, we've got 250 homes to sell. This new ordinance will make our lots and our community so unique. Thank you, thank you, thank you. But long-term for the county, I think is a very bad move.
I do have a few comments, if I might.
Sure.
So, I definitely understand what you're talking about, and there's no doubt that you build a quality product.
Yes, ma'am.
With, based on the way that it is now, again, I'm sure you build a quality product with the zoning just the way it is. Just like Seven Hills and Bentwater, people used to come up to me and say, well, Seven Hills and Bentwater is a PRD. I said, they are PRD on steroids. So, your product is probably this zoning on steroids. Unfortunately, what I've seen is developers, builders are not as conscious... Unfortunately, what I've seen is developers, builders are not as conscious, you know, conscientious of what they build. They want to come in and build a product that just, just does meet the guidelines, and so that's where you come up with, you've got your product is here, whereas to the other guys that come in, may not be the same standard that you have. Secondly, with the larger lot size, well, you did mention, and I know this to be fact, that all the 55 and older communities, they, you're talking about, you know, maintaining the lot, they don't maintain it, right? They, the association does that. The association does a blanket, they mow, they care for it. So, they're not literally having to take care of additional size. I know I've worked with a lot of buyers who love the fact that they want to have that, be able to look out back on their back, because they're always looking for that nice green in back porch, and they're looking in their back, and they like to see not their neighbor right up on top of them. And thirdly, if we have the way that it is now, builders are able to come in and build homes that are much lower priced because, you know, they're able to, you know, not have to have some of the things that Brian had mentioned to their homes. And it's concerning that if they have, if you're building a subdivision, and correct me if I'm wrong, if you're building a subdivision, an R-55 subdivision, and you have a lower price range, the amenity package is not going to be near what it could be if it were a product that it costs you more to build and therefore you have to sell it a little bit higher. Those subdivisions typically have nicer amenities. Is that right or no?
Well, the amenity, Ms. Seaver, is really a function of how many rooftops pay for that amenity. That's why, you know, I recommend if a community comes here that has less than 100 homes, they shouldn't have a pool, because long-term, they won't be able to pay for a community pool. If they have less than 100 homes, although we do it all the time, we build up 350, 400,000 square-foot clubhouse for 50 homes. And if you structure the HOA properly, it will be maintained. I've been creating HOAs for over 30 years, Florida, Texas, Georgia. I've never had one, knock on wood, go defunct. I know it happens, but if you set it up properly and you set the expectations, our buyer, you think we're tough on pink flamingos and campers parked, you know, 72 hours in a driveway? Our buyers, once they control the neighborhood, they're much tougher on each other than we are, because they know that intrinsically creates value. But they also know that it's a whole lot more money to mow and maintain, front, sides, and rear to an 8,000-square-foot lot than it is a 5,000-square-foot lot. And that extra 3,000 feet, if it's put in an amenity package or in a walking trail or passive recreation, again, that adds value. That's what holds the price up. So, we have the luxury at Eccles Farm of being 250-plus-minus units. So, we will be able to support a $3 million amenity package with three separate buildings and three separate, you know, activity centers, but we couldn't do that. We could not build that today if we were forced to do 8,000-square-foot lots. We'd have to back off on that because we just wouldn't have the space. The other problem that we as developers, and it's economics, and I know you as a Commissioner don't have to worry about economics, but Brian, we have to worry about economics every day when we build product. If it doesn't make sense, we can't do it. So, again, I would move lightly on just blanket reductions in square footage, but put other things in there. You have to build amenity. You have to build, you know, an amenitized community, whether that's walking trails, pavilions, you know, those kind of things. So, again, that's my two cents.
Any further comments or questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I really appreciate the Commission's time. Thank you very much. And we would invite any of you out any time to come and look at Eccles Farm. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak on this topic? Please come forward, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the Chair.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Joel Larkin. I'm with Sands, Larkin, Huff, and Marietta. I'm not quite sure where to start here. I guess I'll start this way. I still, after the second public hearing on this, don't understand what it is that has occurred or has not occurred that is causing this county and this Commission and the Board of Commissioners to consider making changes to this R-55 ordinance. It was carefully crafted. Staff, your professional planning staff met with, not one, but a number of different developers who make their livelihood by building this product and similar product in surrounding counties. Every requirement in here was well-thought-out and was vetted, and as of today, I don't believe we've sold one home in the county under this R-55 ordinance. Some of the things I've heard, you know, well, you know, one developer may build them nice, but the others don't. I think, Ms. Seaver, you said, you build it on steroids. Well, if the problem is that you're concerned that somebody's going to build one that's not nice, put in requirements that, make it R-55 on steroids, or at least consider doing that. I submit what you're doing right now is you've decided that there may be a problem, so you're considering basically making this classification unworkable. And I think until you go out in one of these communities and spend some time in it, and I've had the pleasure of doing that, and I've been out there with a couple of the Commissioners, and I think the ones that go out there, I think they get a little bit different attitude about what's going on out there. And looking at the chart, maybe that was instructive, because I know before, we've said, look what Cobb County does. We should emulate Cobb County. And we didn't necessarily understand everything they do, but one thing that they do is they have a density, and then they're completely flexible about the layout within the subdivision. You have to show the county, when you get it zoned, what you're proposing to do. Are you proposing 12,000-square-foot lots, or are you proposing 2,000-square-foot lots? And as part of that, you show the space and the open space and the amenities. That may be the way to handle it out here, because when you go in the communities that work, and they work, they've been building them for 30 years, you know, in and around this area, and I don't know of a single one of these R-55-like communities that's in a state of disrepair or slumlike or one that's embarrassing anybody. I don't know of one that the association has failed and it's lacking governance. I think people who are concerned about the HOA's livelihood and whether it will exist probably are more experienced with HOAs that don't have a real reason for being other than to supervise the initial building of the product. And there are a lot of those HOAs. They're put in place by a developer to make sure that all the color schemes and all the houses are correct until the developer can get out of the neighborhood. And at that time, if they don't have any amenities, if they don't have any common areas, they really don't have a reason for being. But in these village-type developments that are really small cities, they have a reason for being every day because they govern and control the project. They run a whole staff of people who have different jobs. They collect and assess, you know, all the HOAs. So, there really is no way that they can fail. I mean, because if they don't exist, then the houses don't operate. So, to me, that's not a legitimate concern. So, but when you go out in these communities and when you talk to the people, like I've done and some of the Commissioners have done, they understand and they appreciate why that front setback is the way it is. That didn't just happen one day. Somebody woke up and said, let's put the setback 10 feet from the sidewalk. That was designed in a specific way, and the side setbacks were designed to create courtyards, and the yards were taken away and they were put into the common areas. All of that was well-thought-out, and that is what the market wants. And it's not, it's creating prices that put a lot of the other developers to shame. But honestly, I'm kind of embarrassed when we talk about price. I know we have general discussions about affordable housing, and this is my soapbox off of that, about affordable housing, but whenever we talk about something specific, everybody wants every house to be $400,000. I think we need to think about that. But on R-55, if the concern is that someone's going to build a $200,000 house for my mother or your mother, then maybe we need to think about whether we want that. I submit we should, but we need to think about, if we want that, how can we restrict that to allow that to be built in a way that will hold up? And you can build a $200,000 house that'll hold up. You can build a $250,000 house, but that's really not what's going on here. What we've done here is this ordinance creates a specific type of housing, a very, very specific type of housing, and it doesn't compare to any other housing in the county. And when you change those setbacks, and when you increase the lot sizes, when you put the buffers, you make it impossible to develop that. And if that's what you want, then I guess maybe you should vote to do all this. But if that's not what you want, if you want high-end R-55, or if you want R-55 that will hold up and we can be proud of, then I would ask that we maybe have some committee meetings and get out there and sit down, and all of you talk to residents and look at the successful communities at the different price ranges, look at the older communities, and let's figure out what's good about them and what may be bad about them. I know Commissioner Stover doesn't like the light overhangs, and there's reasons why builders do that. That's a purely aesthetic issue. But if that's an issue to the county as a whole, then that may be something to discuss. But that's not a reason to do away with this classification. And if you make it, you know, if you increase all these sizes the way they are, people won't build this. What they'll build is standard neighborhoods using this that are restricted but don't have any of the amenities and don't have any of the things that people like about the neighborhoods, and I think that'd be sad. But I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. We have about five minutes remaining. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak in relation to this topic? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public content of this meeting and then move toward considerations by the Planning Commission as to how to move forward. Taking input from several different people, including staff and Board of Commissioners members, and then representatives from the industry with which this ordinance deals, and representatives for them. I think speaking on my part, one of the reasons that we're still discussing this matter even after having passed the R-55 ordinance, and I'll go ahead and tell you, I've never been a fan of the R-55 zoning ordinance. That's just me. But at the same time, the reason that we're still here discussing that is because there have been perceived deficiencies recognized by each one of the people who have reviewed this ordinance and the discussion of it. Paulding County has had, over the past decades, laws of unintended consequences, and what we're trying to prevent is an opening of Pandora's box with regard to this specific type of development. I think that's commendable on the part of the Board of Commissioners. I think it's commendable on the part of the Planning Commission, as well as the staff and those that have voiced concerns in the community. So, at this time, if there is a movement or a motion to be made, either to approve as-is or to make recommended edits, or even to table further consideration until we've had a chance to meet, that is up to this Planning Commission to make that motion. Or if anybody wants to add comment to what I've just said, please feel free to do so. The floor is yours.
Motion to leave R-55 the way it was approved in 2018.
We have a motion on the floor from Mr. Lowe to leave the ordinance as it was approved originally. Is there a second on that motion? Do I have a second? With no second, that motion fails. Is there another motion that would like to be made?
Mr. Chairman, it seems to me like this thing needs some more work on it, but my question is, how do you go forward with making the changes and all? We've heard basically from everybody, how do we go forward making the changes? And if we do table it to the next meeting, how do we go about making the changes and bring it back to the next meeting? Two-car garages, I think, needs to be added, and also the units per acre is something I would, I'd like to see reduced. Also, I noticed in Mr. Larkin's email from before, back in June, that they suggested 6,000 square feet instead of 4,800 square feet, and that may be something to consider, but it just seems to me like it needs more work on it before we vote on it.
Mr. Phillips, as far as tabling or recommending a motion to table with further consideration to be given? Again, I don't want to see us do that and just put it out there in the ether, and then we're right back here again in a few months, looking at the same problem with the same answer we've got right now.
That's right.
So... That's a great question, and I recognize the value and continued study of it. But as a legal advisor, I'd have to say that our zoning ordinance says that this Planning Commission has the authority to table a proposal one time. It is then to consider what has been tabled at its next scheduled meeting. That is where we are today. The ordinance goes on to say that if the Planning Commission does not forward some sort of a express recommendation to take some action to the Board of Commissioners, then, absent a recommendation, the ordinance says that the proposal will move forward to the Board of Commissioners as if it had been approved. Makes sense?
I was afraid you'd say that.
Well, I'm going to make a motion to change the R-55 as it is now to requiring a two-car garage, and also, I think Brian Stover made a great point as a developer, and he understands it, so I think the larger, what was it, three per acre that he was recommending, I'm going to make a motion for the larger lot size and the two-car garage.
Larger lot size, as it's written in the changes proposed in what's before you is 8,000 square feet. Is that what you're recommending?
Correct.
Because I think we have to have some specificity on it, so...
Yes, that's correct.
All right. And the other changes that are listed throughout that, you're okay with those changes?
I am.
Okay, so...
With the two-car garage.
With the amendment, worded as-is, with the changes to the two-car garage and the increased lot size to 8,000 square feet. Mr. Robinson, do you have that as far as the notes? Is there any further discussion on the matter? I'll ask that as a distance.
Mr. Chairman...
Yes, sir.
If I may, just one legal clarification, and just to be clear about Ms. Seaver's This would be applicable, your motion, to those seeking R-55 on or after June 23, 2020, which was the date of the original proposal, which essentially acts as a vesting provision to those that have already been approved. Just want to make sure that we're clear on that, because due to last month's tabling, it's a little cloudy there. I want to make sure that is the intent of your motion.
Yes.
Also, I'll second that motion, and by seconding that motion, I will make a point that shows that we've already got 1,027 houses that have been approved in this classification. That means there are going to be over 300 single-car garage houses that's already going to be built. So, I think because of it being grandfathered in from the original change, am I not right?
You're correct.
Okay, thank you. And I second that motion.
I think there's a potential for it, yes. I think there's a potential for that.
That's right.
So, I have a second from Mr. Leggett. All in favor? Please signify by raising your hands. All opposed? The motion then passes four, two, and one. So, again, this will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners for their consideration at tonight's meeting at 7:00 PM. Anyone with a vested interest or with an interest in this, please make sure that you're present at that meeting. We will now move forward with the other applications under the zoning, Planning Commission. Mr. Robinson? You'd also like to announce that one is being forwarded to the next month's meeting.
Good afternoon, everyone, and I also want to say I really appreciate...
Good afternoon, everyone, and I also want to say I really appreciate Ms. Seaver being a new member of the Planning Commission. She has served on the Zoning Board of Appeals for several years now, and it was a great job there. So we'll miss her over there, but glad she's here. Just wanted to make an announcement, anyone here for zoning application 2020-13Z. That application has been forwarded to the August 25 meeting. Needs a little more review by staff and interpretation and adjustments with the potential developer.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
If you would like to introduce the...
First application. 2020-07 SUP, application by Richard Nunley for a special use permit on approximately 10.06 acres in a B2 highway business district to operate a tattoo parlor. It's located in Land Lot 145, District 19, Section 2. Property is located at 4075 Charles Hardy Parkway, since Suite 114 in the Citizen Square Shopping Center. As in Commission Post 1, staff has recommended approval.
And is the applicant present?
Hi.
If you would please come to the lectern, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
All right. I'm Richard Nunley. I'm applying for a special use permit to open a tattoo studio in the Citizen Square Shopping Center on 4075 Charles Hardy Parkway. Pretty basic, I just wanted to open a business, lease a space, and this is required to get a special use permit to do so. Not sure really what to say. If you have any questions about what I'm intending on doing, I'd be more than happy to...
This is your opportunity to present what you're wanting to do, and if that's the extent of what you want to say, that's fine.
Thank you, yes.
Wanted to make sure that you are familiar with the two listed stipulations recommended by staff. Are you familiar with those?
No, no, not.
Owner developer agrees approval of this SUP is not transferable to another owner other than the current applicant.
Correct.
And number two would be owner applicant agrees all applicable federal, state, and local regulations for a tattoo business to be obtained prior to business license issuance. You're agreeable to both of those?
Yes, I'm agreeable.
Is there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, Mr. Nunley. You may take your seat.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none, is there anyone here that would wish to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, at this time, I will entertain a motion with regard to application 2020-07-SUP.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Lowe. Do I have a second?
Okay.
I have a second from Mr. Henson. All in favor? Motion passes six, zero, and one. Again, this will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of the Board of Commissioners at 7:00 o'clock. You have to be present for it to be considered.
I'm here.
Yes, sir. You can stay for the remainder of the meeting, or I can wait a couple of minutes if you'd like to exit. It's up to you. Mr. Robinson?
Next application is 2020-10Z, application by Joel L. Larkin on behalf of Farm Store Georgia Development LLC. Is requesting for a modification of zoning applied in rezoning application 2006-10Z, stipulation number four, to allow the applicant to develop a freestanding monument sign on the property. Property is located in Land Lot 605, District 3, Section 3. It's on the southwest side of Cedar Crest Road, north of Cedar Mill Drive. As in Commission Post 4, staff has recommended approval to remove prior zoning stipulation number four with application 2006-10Z.
And applicant would like to come around? If you would sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair. If you've already signed in, I don't assume that that's necessary, but...
Forgot to. Yes, my name's Joel Larkin, Sam's Larkin Huff in Marietta. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. This applicant is proposing to develop this property and has been through plan review and gotten all of its plans signed off on, and they realized in the process that this zoning condition apparently contemplated that both out parcels would be on this end of the shopping center and that they could share a monument sign. The way it was actually developed, the shopping center's in the middle and the out parcels are separated, so it's not feasible to share a monument sign. So we're asking that the condition be deleted and they be allowed to build a sign in accordance with the ordinance.
As there are no additional stipulations to this request, I will ask the Planning Commission if you have any questions for the applicant's agent.
Is there a picture of what the sign is going to look like?
There is not. We're just...
Do you have a size or...
I think it's 75 square feet. We're asking that it be built, we're not trying to vary the normal sign requirements that would apply to the property.
They'll still be required to comply with the county's Development Code Regulations regarding signs.
I can answer. The sign ordinance would allow them to have a monument-style sign, at least 10 feet off the right-of-way, a maximum of 10 feet in height, and a 75-square-foot sign face.
Does anybody here know what a farm store is? Of course. It is the neatest little type of building. They have, you go pick up milk and juice, and you drive through, and ice cream, and it's a neat little place.
Any further comments from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners?
Do they have any?
They do. But if they don't, I do, just call them.
Thank you, Mr. Larkin.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Anyone here that would wish to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns?
Mr. Chairman, can I just clear up the record one thing? The analysis that we have says the sign height maximum is 15 feet, and I think you just said Chris. I mean, Chris, you just said 10?
I said 15.
Okay, then I'm sorry. All right. But we're asking for whatever the ordinance would typically allow.
I said 10.
Do you want us to tell you what color the picket fence is going to be, too? At this time, I will entertain a... Was there anybody wanting to speak in opposition or have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion with regard to 2020-10-Z.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Leggett, a second from Mr. Lowe. All in favor? Motion passes six, zero, and one. Again, it will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of the Board of Commissioners at 7:00. Applicants must be present. Mr. Robinson?
Okay, next application. 2020-11Z, application by George T. McGarity to rezonate 2.44 acres from R2 Suburban Residential to be one general business to operate an upscale neighborhood convenience store slash gas station. Property is located in Land Lot 618, District 3, Section 3, located at 875 Cedar Crest Road, and that is across from the new road Belmont Lane. It's in Commission Post 4. Staff has recommended approval with five printed stipulations. This application has, we noted a lot of opposition. We've had nine calls of opposition, 20-plus letters with noted opposition and concerns, and 15-plus emails. There's a packet of letters and the emails compiled for review if you'd like.
And we announced that one of our members is going to recuse themselves due to potential conflicts, so... And at this time, if you would please sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Jerry Sharon. I'm here to speak on behalf of my friend George McGarity today for this zoning application. I want to thank the staff for recommending approval of what we think is a great project. I also want to take a moment of personal privilege and compliment the staff over and above this, having nothing to do with this. I used to sit where you guys are, and we had the best employees in the world. And I truly believe that still exists today. I just think our staff is fantastic. So that's something separate, but anyway, on to my little talk here today. Mr. McGarity moved to the Crossroads area 40 years ago. When he moved there, he moved from East Cobb County. His goal was to find a place where there was some peace and quiet and have a little country living. When Mr. McGarity moved to the Crossroads community, few of you, maybe none of you will remember this, but the name of the road out there was called Old Marietta Road. Old Marietta Road was dirt, and right before he moved in, it became tar and gravel. Most of the people living on that road complained that the tar and gravel was worse than the dirt road that they had lived on prior to that. Subsequent to that, the county changed the name of the road and upgraded a little bit, and it became Old Burn Hickory Road. I remember Old Burn Hickory Road from the late 80s, because you still had to dodge potholes to go from one end to the other. Since then, the county has changed it to Cedar Crest Road. And now Cedar Crest Road is a very nice road, looks great, and it's a credit to the county. Since George moved to the Crossroads area, there's been a tremendous amount of change in that area. Bentwater, Seven Hills, the park at Cedar Crest, Oak Glen, Cedar Mill, Burn Hickory Meadows, Alexandria Place, and literally dozens more subdivisions have come out there. But Mr. McGarity's story is a little different than most of the people who lived out there back then who opposed those developments. He, in fact, supported every single development on that road. Mr. McGarity's favorite saying is, "A rising tide lifts all boats." Even though those developments actually negatively impacted Mr. McGarity's quality of life, he supported them. Over the years, George has personally committed his personal resources to help that community. He offered the county a free fire station site. He offered land donation for Cedar Crest Road widening. He spent his own money to run sewer infrastructure along Highway 92. He's presently organizing a group of landowners in that area to bring sewer into another part of the county that isn't sewered right now to help develop what we think is going to be a significant commercial investment in the future. Right now, Mr. McGarity has got a project that he'd like for you guys to consider. Commissioners, if what you're looking at looks familiar, it ought to. This is an existing convenience store service station in Paulding County that you approved a while back. This is what Mr. McGarity is proposing. I have a commitment from the development team who are here today that they will equal or better this architectural style right here. Mr. McGarity, actually, his land wasn't for sale when he was approached about this. It's right near his house, across the road and down the road, just a little ways. He had no intentions of selling it at this time. But he started thinking about this, and he started thinking about, is there a need? There's only one convenience store service station all the way from Crossroads to Cobb County. And he realized that even though it's going to be right there in his front yard, he said, you know, this area does need a convenience store, especially if it's going to be a nice one. So he went and he took a look at this one down that is existing today in Paulding County, and he thought to himself, this will be an asset to the community. So going along with Mr. McGarity's philosophy and life, if something's an asset to the community, Mr. McGarity is in support of it. He's never opposed a single development out there, commercial or residential. He thinks this one's going to be a real asset to the community, too. With that, I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Are you familiar, then, Mr. Sharon, with the five listed stipulations the county has recommended?
Yes, the one concern, water, is a little bit troublesome for us. I think the developer and the landowner are willing to work with the county on that. We hate to build a water line or a water main that's going to be abandoned when the road is widened. That's the only stipulation we have any concern over.
Is there any objection to if this moves forward? And again, these are all assumptions. If it were to move forward with an approval, that those stipulations would remain in a place, or are you asking for an amendment as they stand today?
We would like the staff to consider to give us just a little bit of wiggle room in that so that, you know, later on, we can fix it if it's a problem. But that would be up to the staff to make that recommendation, I guess, either now or between now and 7:00 o'clock tonight.
All right. Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
Is there plans to widen Cedar Crest at that point?
Yes, sir. Cedar Crest can be four-lane from the Crossroads community all the way to 41, and GDOT's involved in almost all of those.
Okay. And how many entrances or exits are there going to be at this?
I would ask Bill Miller if he could address that.
This facility, right now, we have planned to be two entrances. Sorry about that. My name's Bill Miller. I'm the operations manager for the company where we're going to be building these. On Cedar Crest, there'll be an entrance coming in there, and then I think it's, what's that side road again? Shady?
Sandpiper.
Sandpiper. There'll be an entrance there also.
Okay.
More questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant?
Can I say one thing about the Sandpiper Path part? When the road is four-lane, when Cedar Crest is four-lane, there is a concern by Mr. McGarity that Sandpiper Path's residents will have a hard time exiting from Sandpiper Path on to Cedar Crest to go left towards Cobb County. So that's one of the reasons why there was going to be an access point, so the residents along Sandpiper Path have the ability to come out at a break in the median.
Further questions from the Planning Commission? Obviously, we've been receipt, just so that we can be clear about this, there has been a number of petitions that have been signed opposing the development for numerous reasons, and we'll get to that at one point. Is there anything that you would like to add as far as the, are you familiar with those petitions and what they contain?
Just on the vaguest, I've brought a representative of the oil company here to talk about any of the, some of them were talking about fumes and things like that, which aren't applicable in 2020. They were back in the 1980s and things like that. But no, I don't want to make you think I've read all of those. That would be not true.
What I'm going to do, then, is allow the meeting to continue. I may call you back up to address concerns that may be brought up during the opposition's point.
Sure, sure.
But are there any other questions from the Planning Commission or the Board of Commissioners to the applicant? Mr. Carmichael?
We have received four or five emails about the concern of the traffic. As a civil engineer, but not very highly practiced, but this man in front of me is a professional engineer, it would be my thoughts, and I should have talked to you about this before, George, that that vertical part of the curb would be lowered, but I would ask your input on that so that it would be not quite as much vertical curve.
Mr. McGarity has trouble hearing, but I will try to answer your question as best from what he has explained to me. You want to have George Jones to come up? Okay, I apologize. I'll...
I like to reserve my time for after...
Yes, sir.
The existing curvature roadway at Sandpiper Path, back about the 2000, 2012, there was a significant amount of crashes that occurred in that area. At that time, the Department of Transportation looked at the infrastructure, looked at the roadway itself, the curvature, the clear zone, and we programmed a project that was completed in August of 2015. As part of that project, we did some curb widening in that area. We also put some super elevation, improved the clear zone a little bit. So the crash history was reduced at that point, but to accommodate this new development, obviously, there's going to have to be some clearing of the banks, so you're going to have to be able to have sight distance to see, looking to your left and right. So again, as part of the plan review process, that... So, again, as part of the plan review process, that will be investigated to make sure that the criteria for entering the roadway and entering the site is satisfied for that roadway speed.
It's easy to see the horizontal curvature of the road contributing to sight distance issue. The vertical through that area, is that also going to be a component?
Yes, every, horizontal, vertical, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
So, my point was with the widening of the road, as Mr. Sharon mentioned, they'll also take care of that vertical curve, so you'll have a lot better sight distance. It'll be, it won't be an unsafe roadway there.
Thank you, Mr. Carmichael. Is there anyone else on the board of commissioners wish to speak?
Hey, George. Is there, was there plans of a left turn lane for this store?
As part of the regulations for commercial developments of collectors and art, you're required by having a left turn lane.
So, with your opinion, and I'm looking at the road also, I mean, when you put that left turn lane, it would actually go to the left, I mean, looking up here to the left, which would then help.
Move the sight.
The sight distance and the curve and everything.
Or you would have to clear out some property to put in that left turn lane. So that's where everybody's off on that side of the road. Again, as part of the development process, you're going to have to look, be sight distance required on your right and your left.
So, that road is designed for thirty-five?
It's posted for forty-five.
Forty-five.
There's certain areas where the roadway does not meet that curve right now is an advisory speed of thirty-five.
Board of commissioners, any more questions to the applicant or to staff? Okay, at this time, I would ask, is there anyone else here that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Your request to reserve time for rebuttal has been noted and done so. At this time, I would ask, is there anyone here that would wish to speak in opposition to this application? May have questions, comments, or concerns, please approach the lectern, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
My name is Daniel Walker. I live at 286 Sandpiper Path, and my community and I are opposing this rezoning application. I just want to quickly address a few points in the presentation in favor of the rezoning application. I think the point was made that Mr. McGarrett has lived here for a long time. I just want to note for the record that this land was, I believe, traded to Mr. McGarrett by the county. I'm not sure of the particulars, but I just wanted to correct that. An additional major clarification that I would like to make, and I would also like to ask for clarification from the Director of Department of Transportation. So I have exchanged email with PDOT about the widening of Cedar Crest Road at this point, and from what I've heard, there is currently no plans to widen Cedar Crest right there. So Kathy Stalard is who I've spoken with. She says that Cedar Crest Road north of Harmony Grove is currently undergoing a widening project, but south of there, this is the actual email that I received from Kathy Stalard. So, am I, is that correct?
You're to direct your comments to the chair.
I'm sorry.
And we'll address that at the end of your comments.
Thank you. So, yeah, I know it seemed to be a potential sticking point, a potential reason why this rezoning application would be granted, is the widening of Cedar Crest Road. So, I'd just like to make it known that the information that I have is that it is not being widened at this point. So we can't count on the widening of Cedar Crest Road to fix the issues with the curve in that road. One more clarification, the entrance on Sandpiper Path, I, all of the residents on Sandpiper Path are currently here, and we would prefer to not have an entrance on Sandpiper Path. The applicant stated that that entrance was for our benefit, and we would prefer that it not be there. All right, I'm going to quickly try and summarize the dozens of conversations I've had about this over the last few weeks, and then I'm going to turn the floor over to the other residents of my community. I've spoken with people on both sides of this issue. From the community, the people like me that live there, everyone is opposed. Dozens of us have written opposition letters to planning and zoning. We're concerned with the proximity to residential housing. We're concerned with the proposed zoning classification of B-1. We're also concerned with public safety, both the number of crashes directly in front of the proposed site and the airborne release of benzene into a residential environment. Now, I've also had several really great conversations with commissioners that felt very strongly about property rights. I'm just going to tell a quick story here about how unlucky I am. I've had one neighbor try to build a housing development on his land with no public road access, and another neighbor tried to start a commercial bed and breakfast out of her residential horse farm. Now I have a third neighbor trying to build a gas station in the middle of a pandemic. So I do believe in property rights myself, but I strongly believe that property rights need to be customized and tailored for specific situations. For this situation, this rezoning application, the applicant is requesting a zoning classification of B-1. B-1 has limits that are too broad, too lenient for the existing residential neighborhood. You can see in my handout that I gave everyone what is permitted under B-1: hotels, parking garages, colleges, department stores, and theaters. It's important to note here that the applicant is planning to sell the land immediately after it's rezoned, so we're talking about a gas station today, but a few years from now, after the property changes hands a few times, it's hard to predict what's going to get built. If the commissioners really feel that this gas station must be located here inside this residential neighborhood, I would request that this whole application be restarted with NB zoning instead of B-1. The applicant would still be able to build a gas station under NB zoning. I know the applicant has already considered NB zoning because it's written on his site plan. My wife and I actually own a business about a quarter mile down the road, and we're zoned NB. Now, NB zoning would require reducing the size of the convenience store, down from forty-five hundred square feet to three thousand, but forty-five hundred square feet is the size of a typical QuickTrip, so that size reduction makes sense in this residential setting. Finally, several commissioners have expressed to me doubt about our neighborhood. They're wondering if this neighborhood we all live in is really residential. I'm here to answer that, yes, we live in a residential neighborhood, and we're proud of our neighborhood. I've spent countless hours playing with my daughter right there on Cedar Crest Road while we waited for my son's school bus. My family and I have a ritual. Every night, we walk to the mailbox on Cedar Crest after dinner. If there is anyone here who thinks that it would be the same family walk, that there would be no impact to us if we had to take that walk every night through the parking lot of a department store, well, I'd like to hear about it. I'm now turning the floor over to Mr. Mark Jenkins, Air Force veteran and retired FBI agent. He will tell you more about the stipulations we are requesting in the name of public safety.
Yes, sir. Would you please sign in and then state your name and address your comments to the chair?
Like Daniel said, my name's Mark Jenkins. I live at 104 Sandpiper Path, which, on the map there, I've run, I have property directly adjacent and directly behind the proposed site of the gas station. So, and I, since Daniel brought it up, I agree with him that, you know, going in and out of Sandpiper Path, I would not want an access directly onto Sandpiper Path where people can drive down and create more traffic coming on Sandpiper Path, so I would also be against that. So, overall, I'm totally opposed to this. I've got several reasons for that. First is safety, which has been kind of brought up already. If you look at the package that you was given, and you can see, actually see the curve where the property is going to be, where the property is and where the site of the convenience store is proposed, not only is there a curve there, but there's also a hill. The line of sight coming out of Sandpiper Path is very limited, so coming in and out of there every day is a wonder if you're going to get hit, because people coming around that curve, they should be thirty-five miles an hour, pushing fifty, sixty, I mean, they're flying around that curve. And if you look at the reports of traffic accidents, you can see that on the eighteen in the last seven years that are reported, most of those are going too fast for the conditions, and others are losing control. So, and that's just the ones that are reported. As the neighbors that are here, including myself, there's accidents where people end up in your front yard, or the yards of the houses located on Cedar Crest and so forth that are never reported because the people then leave, but the tracks are through people's yards. So, it's just, it's just an ongoing concern with safety at that turn. So, adding traffic going in and out of there, in addition to potential pedestrian traffic that's coming across from the new neighborhood, it just, I just, it boggles my mind that the safety issues on this is just crazy to think about what could happen. So that's, that's one of the ones I wanted to bring up, and the concerns that all the folks in this neighborhood have about that being built. The second is, somebody brought it up, the potential release of the carcinogen benzene. So there's been studies, and specifically in California, which we all know California's got their own way of doing things, but it doesn't change the fact that pumping gasoline adds the carcinogen benzene into the air. It doesn't matter where it is, but that happens. So, on the proposed site, it specifically states there's only a twenty-five-foot buffer, and I believe that buffer's showing that it's on the far side of Sandpiper Path, not the closest side to the proposed site. So, and that's only twenty-five feet. In all the recommendations as far as benzene and gas stations close to neighborhoods, the recommendation would be fifty feet instead of twenty-five-foot buffer. So I propose that as a stipulation, if anything does happen, that we have a fifty-foot buffer. So, the third area I wanted to talk about, and kind of no one's brought it up, but as a newly-retired FBI agent out of Atlanta who just moved to Paulding County for lower crime rate, bought a nice piece of property, there is a potential for increased crime rate with the building of a gas station convenience store. It doesn't matter how high-end it is. I've responded to many of convenience store and gas station, whether it be armored truck robberies, robberies, murders, drug deals, all that that occur in convenience store parking lots. So, I bring that up as a concern. I did try to pull up some stats from the other one that's farther up the road. Nothing really, you know, as far as criminal activity increasing there. I'm just saying the potential is there. There's been studies by the FBI and other police organizations that show that eight-point-three percent of robberies occur at gas stations or late-night retail establishments like gas stations. The FBI did their study, and they had nine-point-six percent of the same occurring at gas stations and convenience stores. So, a proposal, if this is built, I'm not sure if it's supposed to be a twenty-four-hour, but any criminal activity that does happen, or loitering, anything like that, because we do have residential properties on both sides of this proposed gas station, which then opens them up to potential more criminal activity of folks that wouldn't even be in this area. I propose, is there a ten PM closing time? Is there, nothing's been discussed, is this a twenty-four-hour? I propose that there's a stipulation that this closes at ten PM. It's potential to, you know, to keep any type of loitering, you know, any type of criminal activity, you know, if it's closed down, then it's closed down. That wouldn't be there. So, I thank the board for the time. That's pretty much all I had to talk about. I know we have several other folks that want to get up and say a few words. So, thank you for your time. Any questions?
We might call you back if there is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. There's five minutes remaining in opposition time. If anyone would like to come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair. And again, that's whether or not you have questions, comments, concerns, or in opposition.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is George Gabbois, and I am the person who is going to be adjacent to this proposed station. I'm truly not in favor of this. I think it's a bad place for the gas station. Number one, is traffic. I don't know if you people travel Cedar Crest Road. That place is busy, and it is fast. It is not thirty-five miles an hour. I live in a place around the corner that you people have taken some of it out, but not all of it. Sometimes, even on a slow day, you have to wait five or six minutes to get out of your driveway, because you can't see to the right. And the car's coming down from the left, and I'm not doing thirty-five. Plus, I don't think that people should have to put a gas station in what I call a cul-de-sac. I mean, you get one way in, you're going to have to come out on Sandpiper, and as far as widening the road, they just widened that road. They put another lane in because of the subdivision going across the street, which many accidents have occurred in front of my house, which is where I live. Day and night, the pole across the road has been replaced twice, because people have knocked it down. It used to have a path in there. Even when they widened the road, they left a little dip on the side. Some people come around that corner too fast, get their wheels caught in it, and down in the woods they go. I mean, for a while, the state police and sheriff's department were on first-name basis for a while. It's hard to believe, but there's a lot of traffic, a lot of heavy traffic, a lot of road construction going on in that area, trucks in and out all the time. It's just a bad place. Somebody's going to get hurt. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gabbois. Is there anyone else? We have a couple of minutes remaining that may wish to speak in opposition or have questions, comments, or concerns?
I just wanted to clarify for the record, the stipulations that we're asking for, if this amendment does pass, is something having to do, too, with the traffic accidents right there. I think a traffic light would be most appropriate. And then we're also asking for a ten PM closing time, and we are asking to increase the buffer space from twenty-five feet to fifty feet because of safety concerns over the release of benzene.
Is there any further comment? Hearing none. I'm closing the opposition portion to this hearing, and I would ask Mr. Sharon if you'd like to come back around. Again, I have some questions for you, but you reserved some time for rebuttal. I would ask if you'd like, go ahead and use that time now.
I don't want to call it rebuttal, so to speak, so if you want to go ahead and ask your questions.
You have time and reserve.
I'll address any of their concerns, I think.
Well, your time is reserved for you to do presentation. Once we finish with that, I'll go ahead and move forward with questions.
Okay, well, as far as Sandpiper Path access, developer is willing to nix that and take it out, and will save the developer money. And the reason it was in there to start with was to help the residents of Sandpiper Path, so we would, we'd be, we would encourage, we would encourage a stipulation that there be no access on Sandpiper Path. Cedar Crest Road has been planned to be four-laned since nineteen ninety-seven, from end to end. Ninety-two, beginning at the end of Cedar Crest Road, is in the planning stage right now, and they've already started buying right-of-way, all the way to I-20 in Douglasville and all the way to I-75 on the north end. This road's got to be four-laned. Mr. Jones, is there not a GDOT project somewhere out there for Cedar Crest Road?
No, if you would, please do.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just wanted.
We will.
Okay.
I'm going to go to that.
Okay, all right. Line of sight will be improved by reducing the hill there at the Line of sight will be improved by reducing the hill there at the, at the curve. So, the developer's willing to do what he has to do, which is to build a convenience store. He's going to make the convenience store work. You can't have a great big hill in your front yard. Developer's willing to put a 50-foot undisturbed buffer in. The language may not be undisturbed anymore, just a 50-foot buffer. Probably, we would want to disturb it to put landscaping.
So, 50-foot landscaped buffer?
However, staff, I mean, back in, in my day, we called it undisturbed, but I think we finally did away with that. We can't close at 10 o'clock. You have too much business between 10 and 11, but we are willing to stipulate that we'll close at 11 o'clock. That can go into stipulations. As far as the traffic signal, developer's willing to partner with the county since it's a partial system improvement on a traffic signal out there, if that's what the county wants, if that's, if that's what's in the best interest of the county. It actually will help the residents across the way as much as anything, but if we're shutting off Sandpiper Path, I don't know exactly why they would want a, a traffic signal on, you know, up the road a little ways, but that's, that's something that the developer's willing to, to go into any kind of development agreement with, with the county to do. So, I don't know if that counts as rebuttal, but...
No. No, that's fine.
Okay.
Is that the extent of your comments?
I, I would like to, I would like to ask, on the benzene question, I'd like to ask Greg Brooks to come up and talk. He's an industry expert on those kind of things. Jerry Sharon doesn't even know how to spell benzene, so...
Hi there. Greg Brooks with Lantil Company. We're out of Kennesaw, Georgia. We're actually a distributor. We are supplying the shale fuel for the, the property that you currently see in front of you. I'm not familiar with any of that. I know we're highly regulated with the EPD. Obviously, we have to follow all those guidelines. You know, I kind of use the similar mythology of if you heat your home, you have probably a carbon monoxide system to catch that. So, I don't think there's really any rebuttal to that conversation because I really, really don't, I've never heard that before.
Any further comment?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sharon? At this time, just a few questions, and you've answered some with what, with what I was going to ask. So, I'll, some of the concerns being mentioned were the widening plans, and I will go to Director Jones here shortly. Benzene emissions, B1. The, the request to rezone to B1 for the purpose of putting in a convenience store, is that the lowest zoning possible for the intended purpose?
It's, it's, it's what this needs to be. I mean, the goal here is to have something that's a benefit to the community. They may have ancillary businesses in there that, that people on Sandpiper Path might visit, so...
If there, I guess the question then for me would be, would there be any opposition by the owner or the applicant to condition the B1 zoning for the use as a convenience store versus any other use allowable under B1?
If the convenience store has units in there, and they have a restaurant or something, you know what I mean, like, that would be a challenge.
Just what the question was asked to me.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. I get, I understand.
Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission before we go to staff? Mr. Lo?
Earlier, you made mention of stipulation number three, want some wiggle room on that?
Yeah, just...
What would that look like?
Well, I don't know how to word it right. If you want us to, if you want us to rebuild a water main that's going to be abandoned when we widen the road, that, that seems like an enormous waste of about $250,000. The developer's willing to work with the county in any way to make sure that we service this water for this development. We don't want to do off-site system improvements, but we're certainly willing to work with the county. I mean, maybe just give us the wiggle room to come into some kind of a development agreement and leave, leave a little bit of wiggle room so the staff during plan review can, can work with the developer.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, any question to the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Sharon.
Can I take one second?
Sure.
You guys are wrestling with some serious issues on the R-55. And, and no, I, I, having sat in that chair for eight years, I'm going to tell you something. It's a very important thing you're doing right there. And, and Roger was on the commission with me. And the sooner you get a quality R-55 zoning category in here, the better off you're going to be because back in our time, we were the youngest county in Georgia, and we had a lot of people coming there with children. And R-55 will encourage seniors, and the more seniors you can have, the better. They use no infrastructure whatsoever, ever. So, I just want to compliment you all for tackling a very difficult issue. I should have gotten up during it and said that, but I kept my mouth shut, which is unusual. Y'all have a great day.
For the record, I was here during that time period too, and I'm still young, so...
Why not?
Not as much as I used to be. Being that the question has been asked and mentioned both in the presentation of the application as well as in the comments giving concerns and opposition, Mr. Jones, could you address as far as the timetable the county may have in the widening, particularly through this area along Cedar Crest?
Mr. Chairman, I'd say this is probably a two-part question. Historically, back in 2003, I believe, October, September of '03, the Paulding County Board of Commissioners voted to basically adopt a Cedar Crest road widening corridor to accommodate a future four-lane roadway that went from Highway 92 to the Cobb County line, basically setting a 130-foot right-of-way template to accommodate this future roadway when the funds were going to be able to build it and was warranted. Currently, there's an active project right now for four-laning Cedar Crest Road. It's in the preliminary engineering phase from Harmony Grove Church Road to the Cobb County line. This other section of Cedar Crest Road from Highway 92 up to Shelton Elementary, that isn't a long-range program. There is not a PI number for this project at this point. There is no, funds been allocated from Paulding County at this point. Right now, it's shown 2031 to 2040 timeframe. Again, long range.
So, any improvement done along... Sorry. Any improvement done along this road section is going to have to be done through whatever is worked in the plan review aspect of development?
Right. This, you cannot assume the future four-lane widening will do improvements to accommodate this project.
And in plan review, consideration's going to have to be given by the developer at the insistence upon the engineers with Paulding DOT to ensure that site distance requirements can be met. Is that fair to say?
That is correct. That is fair to say. Yes, sir. We're going to look at it based on the posted speed limit of 45 miles an hour and basically make sure site distance is met for your intersection site distance, left-turning site distance, stopping site distance.
And site distance would be based on the posted or certified rate of speed and the visibility from the questioned intersection, be it a driveway or a roadway intersection...
Or the access point, yes, looking to.
To ensure that persons can safely enter traffic at that location.
That is correct.
And I say that, I wanted to be clear, what we're engaged in here with the Planning Commission and people who attend this regularly, staff and my cohorts here on the council and commission and the Board of Commissioners, is we engage in whether or not determining a proposed use is appropriate for the location based on the future land use map of Paulding County that was adopted by the Board of Commissioners, as well as the comprehensive plan that was also adopted by the Board of Commissioners. When you get into the particulars of the development, how it's going to look, how it's going to function, that is, that is activity reserved for the educated professionals of the county, the engineers, the architects, that will sit down and insist upon development regulations compliance with the developers. So, that's what I'm asking right now of our director with the DOTs, just people would understand. Are there any questions to George Jones from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions?
Here's your chance that the county would consider dropping the speed limit along Cedar Crest there. I've noticed of the 20 examples they show here, as far as accidents, they're either too fast for conditions, rear-ending somebody, lane changing proper. It looks like they're just running too fast on that road. Is that a...
I think you look at the diagram that was provided, and that's over a pretty long period of time, from 2011, 12 till now. I think once we did that project to help, again, the idea was to help with the reducing the crashes, it actually has improved that section because I remember in one year, I think we had eight or nine crashes. It was averaging probably six or seven. It's dropped down to about two a year at that point. So, again, we can post a speed on a road of 25 miles an hour. They're not going to drive it, unfortunately. That road is rated...
Because so many are showing it's too fast for conditions.
That road is radar-certified by the Georgia Department of Transportation, and any change to the speed limit and be able to run radar, we would have to get their approval and sign off on that. And knowing how the process works, there is no way we would be able to justify that based on the traffic stream that's out there right now.
Thank you. Any further questions to the director? Thank you, sir. I'll go ahead and address, though, Ms. Ashmore, if you would mind, speaking to the requirement of the water line. Obviously, the, the concern is, I think maybe Mr. Jones has already addressed that, in that the, this segment of the road is the segment that's in the long-term planning stage. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, any investment in replacement of the water line would be, well, I'll let you speak to that.
There is a 12-inch water main coming from the north down toward the, toward the property that's in question. And there is an older line under the pavement on the west side of that roadway. We are requesting, and I kind of massaged some of the language as we were, as we were listening, that we're trying to accomplish here is extending that line along the, the east side of the, of the, of Cedar Crest on your map and to bring that to the property. And so, we could entertain a stipulation that says the owner developer shall enter into a development agreement or extend the water main on the east side of Cedar Crest Road to serve the property, which gives us the flexibility during the planning process to be able to consider where they are with the roadway, where they are with easements, setting, and, and setting alignments and, and elevations.
So, tie that, you, you would recommend tying that stipulation to that consideration with the timing of widening forward?
Yeah.
And I will ask Mr. Sharon shortly if that would be an acceptable modification. And again, this is assuming that it receives a favorable approval from the Planning Commission. I don't know that that's going to happen yet, but we'll, we'll address that. Thank you, Ms. Ashmore. Mr. Sharon?
Yes, the developer would be in agreement with doing something like that, that just gives everyone wiggle room to do the right thing for the county. We don't want to just go out there and spend a whole lot of money for, for no reason or for a bad reason. A, a development agreement allows the developer and the, and staff to work together during the plan review phase to get water to the site and, and certainly to help get water beyond.
Thank you very much. My last question is, Mr. Robinson, could I impose on you? The, both the 50-foot buffer requirement, I mean, we've gotten, they're agreeable to the requirement of a 50-foot buffer adjacent to the residential properties. Is there any stipulation that we know, or any requirement within development regulations that would state that it has to be a non-disturbed?
Actually, the, the buffer requirement in the zoning ordinance, which is 25 feet, does have some flexibility for some of the infrastructure. In this case, if the buffer is increased, it would be along the north, the west, and the south property lines, which would be a buffer along Sandpiper Path.
Okay. And then, in your estimation, is the proposed use compliant with Paulding County's comprehensive plan and the future land use map?
Yes, and that's in the staff analysis also.
So, so, are there any other questions for the staff from the Planning Commission? Any questions from the Board of Commissioners? At this time, I will entertain a motion with regard to Application 2020-11-Z. Please keep in consideration the discussion items that we've had. They are agreeable to, Paulding County Water and Sewer, under Ms. Ashmore's leadership, is agreeable to tying the third stipulation to the timing of the widening of the road with Paulding County DOT. And you figure out how you want to make that particular wording. There has also been an agreement on the part of the applicant to include a 50-foot landscaped buffer surrounding the property on the residential sides, and also an agreement to avoid access or to nix the access to Sandpiper Path.
Motion to approve with five printed stipulations, number three being revised, adding an additional stipulation that there is no access on Sandpiper Path.
Okay. We have a motion to approve from Mr. Lo, amending stipulation number three, tying its requirement to the Paulding County DOT's timetable of widening the road, as well as adding the stipulation prohibiting access of this development to Sandpiper Path. Is there anyone wanting to second that motion? That includes the other four stipulations, by the way.
I'll second.
I'll second from Mr. Leggett. All in favor? All opposed?
All opposed.
You'll do favor? And we want to put, so we have a motion passes for one and, would I call that two? Or just not count?
Just so, just so the audience can see the votes, if you could recast the votes because we, we can't see your hands as you vote.
All in favor? All opposed? And then we have one recusal and my abstention.
Four, one, and two.
Four, one, and two. So, this will now be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners meeting tonight at 7:00 with a recommendation of approval with the amended stipulations. And again, applicant must be present for it to be considered. Anybody with an interest in the property should be present for that meeting. At this time, I'm going to ask the Planning Commission if they would take a five-minute break as we have been running long, and we will resume in five minutes. And we will resume in five minutes. Could we have everybody take their seats again, please? You can talk to Laurie anytime, okay? I did. Everyone, please take your seats. Please take your seats, or you can step out to the lobby if you'd like to continue talking. Mr. Robinson, would you please?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Next application, 2020-12Z, application by Elite Engineering LLC, Jonathan Jones, to rezone 109.7 acres from R2 Suburban Residential District A1 Agricultural to Low Density Quality Residential District, or Development District, for the total of 214 single-family residential dwelling subdivision. Property is located in Land Lots 962, 984, 985, 1033, District 3, Section 3, on the south side of Dooley Road and east side of Gullage Road. Senate Commission posted for. Staff has recommended approval with 11 printed stipulations, and we have had a call with questions.
Is the applicant present? If you'd sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission, Board of Commissioners, staff, and public. My name is Jonathan Jones, and I am here representing the proposed application 2020-12Z for 109.7 acres of land located off of a Gullage Road. The proposed zoning category is LDQRD, which stands for Low Density Quality Residential District. It is one of, if not the least, or most conservative of the zoning categories on sewer that Paulding County has in the ordinance. The property requires, per these zoning ordinance, 10.97 acres of open space, but our land plan has provided 23.09 acres of green space, which is over twice the required amount. A majority of the property is already zoned R2, and it has sewer on the property where the landowner donated to the county back in 2006 for the Possum Creek, upper Possum Creek outfall that ultimately goes down and sewers most of the New Hope Basin. The surrounding properties are a combination of PRDs and R2-zoned properties. PRD allows up to three units per acre. R2 regular zone property allows 15,000 square foot with a maximum density allowed at 2.5. Our proposed density is 1.95 units per acre, so it's less than two units per acre. We have no intended direct access onto Dooley Road at this time, and we'd like to make a note that staff has noted that it is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, and it meets the future land use map. My client has reviewed the zoning stipulation and is in agreement with staff's proposed stipulations, and I'll be happy to answer any additional questions or leave the remainder of my time for rebuttal.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jones, are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
Can you say there's not going to be any access on Dooley Road?
No, sir, there's no intended access. It's not our desire to have access, and unless staff saw it fit to require a secondary access, which I don't think is required for 214 units, it's not our intention to have an access point onto Dooley Road just off of Gullage Road with the typical road improvements that would be required for 214-unit development.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
What school district would this serve?
It's East Paulding High School. It is Abney Elementary, and it's Moses Middle School.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission? At this time, I would ask if the school board representative, Mr. Hofstadter, do you have any questions that you may need?
Just a point of information, that area there with the amount of homes, will put an added burden onto our local elementary school. Abney, right now, it's actually on the border of East Paulding and North Paulding, so it will probably precipitate.
Can we get you onto the mic?
Can you start over?
If you would, that way it can be.
Okay, got it, all right. That particular property right there with the amount of homes being proposed at 214 would probably, based on historical trends, produce anywhere from 170 to 180 K-12 students. That will place greater burden on the local elementary school there that is already currently at capacity. It is on the border of the East Paulding High School and North Paulding High School attendance zone, so this would more than likely precipitate an attendance zone modification with the school board.
Thank you very much. Board of Commissioners, are there any questions to the applicant at this time?
It's 1.95 units per acre. Yes, sir.
Any further questions from the Board of Commissioners? Thank you. At this time, I would ask, is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none, is there anyone here that would wish to speak in opposition to or may have questions, comments, or concerns to this application? Again, we have one noted call with questions or email with questions from Mr. Robinson? Anyone wishing to speak against? If you would, please come down, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
My name's Dan Dooley, 74 Dooley Road. I guess, you know, I don't want to see it coming in, but I don't want to stand against it also. But I guess my question would be is, what type of buffer? I've got an acre and a half, and my neighbor here's got another acre and a half right there, two, okay, next together on Dooley Road. What kind of buffer would there be between my property and this housing development that's going in?
We will answer that for you shortly, or Mr. Robinson, if you just want to chime in?
The low-density, the low-density quality residential requires a 25-foot perimeter buffer.
Is that planted buffer?
That is planted or undisturbed. If it's sufficient as undisturbed, it would be counted as at 25 feet.
Thank you, sir. That is a 25-foot buffer planted or undisturbed.
Okay. Would there be any way of fence, some type of fence, other than just a greenery buffer or something like that between our property and?
We will ask.
Thank you.
Sir, did you want to sign in, state your name, address your comments to the chair?
Yes, my name's Jeff Ashson. I live at 144 Dooley Road, and I just, along with Dan, we've enjoyed quite a bit of privacy there since we've been there, which is, for him, over 40 years, maybe 36 years, and our privacy is very important to us, and we would like to see a privacy fence built on the three borders of our property joining together. We would like to see that put in, and, you know, privacy fences are normally like six-foot, but that's not really a privacy fence in my book. I'd like to see it one built that's at minimum eight-foot high, you know, because we just, I don't like the idea of living in a subdivision, which I'm about to be right in the middle of it, but I would like to retain some semblance of my privacy there, and I know Dan would too. And so if we get that considered, sure would be very appreciated to you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone here that would wish to speak in opposition to this application? Questions, comments, or concerns? Anyone further? Hearing none at this time. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir.
We've had a couple of questions. I'm sure you heard them with regard to maintaining existing residents' privacy.
You may have to ask one of the gentlemen, if they would, to identify, is it the island of property there in the curve on Dooley? You're welcome. Show me, or you can point. Is it okay for you?
Mr. Dooley, if you would show Mr. Robinson on.
Yeah, show Mr. Robinson if you want, sir.
I've got it, when it turns on the Dooley Road, our property is right there on the right. Yes, it's right next to it.
There's two right there?
Yes. Yeah, I just want clarification. So to the gentleman who lives on the east side or the northeast side, there's actually an open space pocket area there that's about probably nearly half acre that's intended to be open space. My client is amenable, though, to do three sides of fence. We would request that it be a voluntary stipulation added to double-sided six-foot wooden privacy fence. We've already completed some grading on the project. They will be significantly higher, their property will be, than the proposed grades at this location. So not only will they have a six-foot fence and a 25-foot buffer, but the homes will probably be somewhere around 10 to 15 feet vertically below their nearest property corner. So that should probably help facilitate a little bit.
You're saying the development will be lower, therefore the impact of a six-foot fence would be greater than it would in most circumstances?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and it would.
But your preference would be to agree to a six-foot fence versus the eight-foot, but you would.
Yeah, and six-foot double-sided, it means it's a more of a quality. We get the good side, and they get the good side. So, and eight-foot typically is not normal, and what ends up happening is the boards are more likely to warp and fall apart over time, and, you know, although there's an HOA, you know, how those end up being, a six-foot's a typical fence. If it's something that they just absolutely require us to be an eight-foot, we can, but it's not, it doesn't end up being as quality a product, frankly.
Any other questions?
Who would maintain that fence? As you know, wooden's going to rot over time.
Yes, sir. So there's a mandatory homeowner association, and the homeowner association would be responsible for citing the homeowners, because it would be on their properties to adhere to keeping it up to code and such as that. If they don't, it's much like if you have a garbage can or a basketball goal, they'll find you and find you and find you until you reach some issue. But that's how it is governed, and that's the governing body, would be the HOA, which is a requirement under this zoning category anyway, so.
Now, would they be responsible for their side of that fence?
No, sir, it'd be solely on our property. Yeah, the sole purpose in doing the six-sided, six-foot double-sided is you get a good product on both sides, and it's a more stable product, whereas if you do just a standard eight-foot wooden fence, it's not double-sided, and that longer wood just does not sustain weather and time like anything else. And the reason I know is I've done them all, and I know how they ultimately end up. It's really not a price thing. A double-sided six-foot's probably the same price or more than an eight-foot single-sided. It's not a price thing, it's a quality thing. Because ultimately, a PRD or any other development, you do this out of buffer, you want that thing to stay there so you don't have to worry about the residents taking care of it over time, so.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions? And again, we've had commentary from the Paulding School Board to keep in consideration, but at this time, I would ask, is there a motion regarding application 2020-12-Z?
Motion to approve.
With the 11 stipulations?
With the 11 printed stipulations.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Lowe with the 11 printed stipulations. Do I have a second? I have a second from Mr. Aston. All in favor?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Just to clarify, Mr. Lowe's, it's with the 11.
Does that include the 11 stipulations? And listening to you closely, that does not include the privacy fence, is that correct?
No, it does not.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we have a withdrawal of the second. So we have a motion to approve with the 11 printed stipulations from Mr. Lowe. And is there a second? Hearing none, that motion is. Hearing none, that motion has failed. Is there a motion to be made on this application 2020-12-Z?
I make a motion to approve the 11 print stipulations with, and then add stipulation of a six-foot double-sided privacy fence around the three sides of the property.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Mr. Aston with the 11 printed plus one stipulation requiring a double-sided six-foot fence around three sides of the property as proposed by the applicant. And I have a second from Mr. Lowe.
Yep.
All in favor? Motion passes six, zero and one. Again, this will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of the Board of Commissioners meeting. The applicant must be present if we're, present before it can be considered. And Mr. Robinson, if you would continue, please.
Okay, final application 2020-14-Z, application by lead engineer Jonathan Jones to rezon 62.21 acres and with the combined two adjacent properties for the rezoning to Low Density Quality Residential District. Property's currently zoned R2. This would result in totaling subdivision development of 132 single-family homes. The property is located in land lots 401, 402, 403, 464 and 463. District 3, Section 3, on the east side of Cedar Crest Road, north and south of North Springs Drive. South of North, south of North Springs Drive.
Good.
Yeah, I was making sure, the south of North Springs Drive. Page 4, staff recommends approval with the 11 printed stipulation. I've had one call with concern and opposition.
And if you'd sign in, state your name and address your comments to the chair.
I signed in.
Good.
Jonathan Jones again with the lead engineering. I'm here representing another LDQR-D. This project is on Cedar Crest Road. It's 132 proposed lots on 62.21 acres. The property is surrounded by PRDs and R2 zoned properties. The proposed zoning is 2.1 units per acre. PRD allows three units to acre. R2 zoned sewer property allows two and a half units to the acre. Staff has recommended approval and noted that it is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and meets the future land use plan. My client has reviewed all stipulations. The only one that I would like to have some clarification from Mr. Jones is the 660 feet offset from North Springs. We have surveyed the, the frontage of this property and there's only a section of about 75 feet where we can meet the site distance requirements. Now, there is a 2023 intended to be groundbreaking for a widening project that will affect this particular development and we're in agreement with, with working with staff and the plans as it relates to those improvements or whatever. I just want to have some clarity or some, some opportunity that if we agree to stipulation number five, that, that 660 would probably eliminate our ability to meet site distance requirements. Therefore, if I'm not mistaken, that would eliminate our ability to develop this property. So I just, I understand what the purpose of the 660 is and how it relates to North Springs and it probably really is geared towards that future land use map when Cedar Crest Road's widened and everything, but I wanted to get some clarity on that one stipulation. The rest of the stipulations, my client is acceptable with, I just, I need to make clarity so that we can ensure that we get the site distance, if approved, to, to actually develop this property.
Well, I think on that note, can we go ahead and try to address that? Would that be something that would be feasible at this time, Mr. Jones? Now hold your comments, your time.
Thank you, sir.
Now, Mr. Chairman, as you know, during the plan review process with the Development Control Committee, that's when they look at the specific items such as the site distance of a road. What this stipulation was for is basically just to have them know upfront that we're going to require specific distances offset from intersections. Obviously Cedar Crest Road is, is the second or third busiest county roadway, lots of traffic. There's going to be lots of traffic in the future. We obviously have a future project that will be constructed out there. It's currently in the preliminary engineering phase. So I don't necessarily have an issue with modifying that per se, but we still are going to require that, you know, intersections be offset to accommodate safety and maneuverability.
Well, I certainly think that those types of things should be factored in. My, my concern here is if we codify it by a vote of the Planning Commission with this stipulation, it makes it a little bit more difficult, I would think, to, I mean, you'd have to come back for a modification of that same stipulation.
Mm-hmm.
And again, our county attorney could address that or tell me if I'm right or wrong on that. I mean, if we need to put, set it as a requirement that must comply with the safety requirements as stipulated by the Paulding County DOT, which could include or would include site distance, it's a little more vague, but it gives you some room to actually do something applicable.
That would certainly create more flexibility. As it stands right now, it must be 660 feet of separation. Can't be 659 and it can't be 661. Just, as a lawyer might read that.
Okay.
And I don't think that's the intent of DOT, but I'll defer to Mr. Jones on the discretion of DOT to approve separation from North Springs Drive.
Yeah, I, I agree, Jason. You know, I was not looking for 660.5. It was just basically to, you know, make sure that they understood upfront that we're going to require separation based on the arterial roadway classification and driveway spacing. So I'm amenable to modifying that.
All right. If you, if, if you would like during the remainder of this discussion, just kind of give us some wording that the Planning Commission can consider when they go to make a motion, assuming that it is going to be made a motion in a favorable sense?
How about owner developer agrees, proposed spacing shall be approved by the Paulding
All right.
I believe the important language would be separation as approved by Paulding County Department of Transportation.
Okay.
From-
Say determined during plan review?
From North Springs Drive.
Or could we just say determined during plan review? That was a comment from-
That's fine as well, but that renders it purely a plan review issue.
Well, to me, it should be a plan review issue, honestly. I mean, again, we're getting, we're getting precariously close to determining what color the picket fence is, which is one of my favorite expressions, but I mean, there are certain things that need to be considered in Planning Commission and there are certain things that are totally under the auspice of the plan review portion of what the county does and mixing those can be complicated and confusing, so. Well, we have that discussion, so how would you like to proceed?
I just, I think we could do owner developer agrees, proposed entrance shall have spacing from North Springs Drive as approved by the Paulding County Department of Transportation.
The Planning Commission, please note that if we move forward with a motion to approve, that needs to be considered as a possible amendment to that stipulation. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir.
If you would please come back around, you may finish your comments and presentation?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Jones, for that. I, I have actually no other concerns or comments. I'm just here to answer any questions or, or leave the remainder of my time for rebuttal that I'm in.
Well, then, at this time, I would open it to the Planning Commission. You got something?
Do you think that that adjustment could be made through maybe losing a lot or something on the front because it's showing four lots across the roadway there? Is that something you can adjust to make sure you get that distance?
Yeah, so it's not, it's not necessarily a lot loss. It's, right now, from North Springs, our current entrance is about 333 feet. We can push that to about 408 feet. At that point, we're losing site distance where we don't meet the requirements by Paulding County from a site distance standpoint. We can move our drive wherever we want physically, but to meet the requirements from a safety and requirement on 45 mile an hour speed limit, we're limited because we are in the curve of Cedar Crest Road. So that's why I asked for that clarification because if we were forced to move it to 660, I could literally just take that cul-de-sac road and stub it out and everything would be great, except for I won't have site distance because I've already surveyed it. And before my client put this property under contract, that was one of the caveats is, is I'm not sure we can get site distance. And there's only about 72 feet along that road where you can meet the requirements for site distance. And so we're kind of pigeonholed as it relates to that.
That's really squeezing it in, isn't it?
Yeah, if it wasn't in a curve, it wouldn't be as challenging issue, but the future roadway improvements that Kathy sent over is actually going to, quite honestly, improve everything to where it's going to be much more amenable and easier and safer access, but, you know, I don't think that project's scheduled to let until, like, 2023.
Are there any other questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant?
So with 132 homes, we're looking at, based on the school, I think we calculate 2.5, 2.8 children per home. That gives us 330 homes in this subdivision, along with, I know there are two other subdivisions going in on the Seven Hills Connector. I tried to get that information, wasn't able to obtain of how many homes are going in there. How does that going to affect the school system there?
Yes, and that's a good question. So trends have shown in that area, out of the number of homes, roughly 80, it'll produce 80% of children. So if you have 132 homes, you're looking at about 100 to 110 K-12 students. Okay?
Okay.
All right. This will, just like the other development, it will precipitate and impact at least two of our schools, which could, could result in another attendance zone recommendation.
Are you looking at double sessions at any time in your planning? I don't ask that, tough question.
Yes, sir. We're, we're looking at a number of options, including scheduling, virtual schools, all types of things. But with the number of homes going in there, we also need to be able to make sure we have enough seats and capacity available. Because at any one time, parents can always choose to come back to a face-to-face type of instruction. So with, again, with the amount of PRDs, with the amount of developments going in and with the resources we have in order to build more seats, we have to look at all options.
In Paulding County, if you decide to go virtual, does that mean you, you're virtual for the whole semester or are you allowed to come back in before the, end of the semester?
So currently, as we launch this new option, we are currently asking that people stay for the semester.
Okay. Thank you. Go back to the applicant. Were there any more questions directly to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions? Then at this time, I would ask, is there anyone else that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Mr. Hofstadter, I would assume that that was the comments that you would want to make or I'd ask, so just, I didn't overlook you, but if you have something further to say, please do so. Is there anyone here that would wish to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments or concerns? Hearing none. Then at this time, I will entertain a motion with regard to application 2020-14-Z. Again, there are 11 printed stipulations. We've had discussion about the modification of the fifth stipulation regarding the spacing of the entrance to be approved by Paulding County DOT.
Motion to approve with 11 printed stipulations, the fifth one being revised. The owner developer agrees, the proposed entrance separation shall be approved by Paulding County DOT.
So we have a motion to approve by Mr. Lowe with the 11 stipulations and the revised or amended fifth stipulation as he's quoted. Do we have a second? So I could have a second from Mr. Aston. All in favor? All opposed?
Roger. I'm opposed.
Opposed. Then we have a passage with four, two and one. This will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners with the favorable approval. And again, the applicant must be present for it to be considered tonight at seven o'clock. Anybody having an interest needs to be present as well. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn from Mr. Lowe.
Second.
Second from Ms. Fitzgerald. All in favor? Thank you very much. Six, zero and one.